Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the second MTA public hearing on the proposed fare adjustments. And we're going to go through all of the mechanics first. Hearing from Ruby Benitez, who will be the moderator of this hearing. There's a lot of logistics, but we'll go through that. And then we'll hear a presentation on the actual proposed fare changes before we go to the mic and everybody's opportunity to comment. So with that, thank you again to everybody who's participating, whether in person or online. And with that, let me pass it over to Ruby.
Thank you.
And I just, before I, I just want to acknowledge a couple of board members here. In addition to MTA leadership staff, we have board member Garodnik, Brighamin, and Leathers to my right, to the audience left, and board member Albert to my left, audience right. So you've got a full complement of MTA leadership here to listen to what folks think. Ruby?
Thank you for joining today's hearing on the MTA's proposed changes to fares. The hearing will begin shortly. Good morning and welcome to the MTA Chair's Fares Change Public Hearing. For the record, today is August 20th and the time is 10:02. My name is Ruby Benitez. My colleague Andy Buter and I will be hearing officers for this public hearing. Seated at the table are MTA leadership and board members. This hearing is being live streamed on the MTA's YouTube channel and recorded. It will be available to view on the MTA website and YouTube channel. By attending this virtual hearing, you consent to be recorded. This is the second of three hybrids, public hearings to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to MTA fares affecting transportation on the subways, buses, commuter railroads, and the Staten Island Railway and accessory. To make the public aware of these hearings, advertisements were published in 21 print media outlets, including multilingual outlets throughout the region. The MTA also provided notice of the hearings in multiple press releases on the MTA website, on social media, and on multilingual signs and digital displays in stations, buses, and trains. We encourage anyone joining us on Zoom to take a short survey using the QR code or link currently being displayed. This survey helps us understand the effectiveness of our outreach. The link to the survey can also be found in the Q and A section of the Zoom. If you're unable to join us at the public hearings, you can provide comments on the MTA website at mta.info/2025-fair-hearings. You may also send a letter to the MTA Government and Community Relations with your comments to 2 Broadway, 16th Floor, New York, New York, 10004, or call the public hearing hotline Telephone agents are available from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. MTA staff will also hold public comment sessions throughout the transit network to collect customer comments on the proposed fare changes. Starting August 25th, staff will be stationed at subway stations, mobile sales vans, and in the Long Island Railroad and Metro North stations on certain days and times. Visit mta.info/2025-fair-hearings for the full schedule. All public comments, including comments spoke today and at other public hearings, online porter submissions, letters, phone calls, and comments provided at the public comment session in the transit network will be transcribed and incorporated into the official record. All comments carry the same weight. Regardless of how they're submitted, comments are provided to all MTA board members so that they can review them prior to final consideration of the fare change proposals. In addition, you will notice there are MTA staff stationed at tables outside the hearing room. In this space, staff are on hand to talk about how to use the tap and go for fare payment. Staff can also provide you information about the MTA's reduced fare program for seniors and people with disabilities and the New York City Fair Fares Program. If you're eligible, you can also sign up for the New York City Fair Fares Program here on the spot. I will now turn it over to you, Jesse Lazarus, MTA Deputy Chief of Commercial Ventures, for a brief presentation about the proposed fare changes. After Jesse concludes her presentation, we will begin the public comment portion of the hearing. Jesse?
Thank you, Ruby, and thank you to members of the public who have joined us this morning to participate in this public hearing. We are grateful for your time and effort to be here, no matter where you're reaching us for comment, whether that's in the room here, on Zoom, or in writing, which is traditionally how we do receive the majority of public comments on proposed fare changes. So before we review the details of the proposed rate and policy changes today, let's ground ourselves in the fact that residents of the New York region have among the lowest transportation costs in the country. As the overwhelming majority of New Yorkers understand because they take public transit every day, the MTA is what keeps New York affordable, and fares and tolls are what keep the MTA running and running frequent service. We strive to make our fare and toll increases small and predictable. In fact, 15 years ago, after extensive study led by Dick Ravitch, the MTA adopted a pattern of small and predictable fare and toll increases every two years, and we've acted in compliance with that policy ever since. Doing so has protected all of us from those double-digit percentage increases like we experienced in the 1980s and has helped the MTA keep service levels steady. This has been good for customers, and it has been good for the MTA as it's helped us generally keep pace with standard expense increases and also generic inflation. So before diving into the details, what does a fare increase get us? The bottom line is it's more transit service for everybody, and the MTA has been doing more with less already. We're running more frequent service than ever before, and of course, that is powered and made possible by a talented workforce of the MTA's men and women who receive regular wage increases for keeping the system running 24/7. We do this while maintaining free and discounted programs for targeted affordability. Think of Student Omni or the Reduced Fare Program, 1.5 million members strong, or the hundreds of thousands of Fair Fares programs, Fair Fares program customers who receive half-price fares. We also are subsidizing city tickets and unlimited ride fare caps. We're managing an aggressive operating efficiency program. This is $500 million in recurring annual savings, and we're doing that without cutting service. All of this while keeping customer satisfaction scores the highest they have been in a long time. So this morning, we welcome your comments on the details of our plan to grow service and keep transit as the linchpin of affordability in New York. Let's dive into the details, beginning with the rates proposed for New York City Transit. Starting on the left with subways, local buses, and para-transit, we're proposing a 10-cent increase to the base fare. That's up from $2.90 to $3. The 12-trip fare cap would go up to $36 for unlimited rides in a seven-day period on subways and local buses, no prepayment required. Of course, those 1.5 million Reduced Fare Program customers receive half-price base and fare cap trips. On the right for Express Bus, we're proposing a 25-cent increase, so from $7 to $7.25. Reduced fare customers can ride for half-price in the off-peak on Express Bus. And very good news, we are introducing a new, a second fare cap for Express Bus customers. The details of that are starting in January. Express Bus riders would never pay more than $67 in any seven-day period for unlimited Express Bus, local bus, and subway rides. And again, that's with no need to prepay. Onto the fare product side, fare product menu. As you know, MetroCard sales end New Year's Eve this year, and we're going all-in on tap and go. So here, I'll introduce the straightforward and simple and financially flexible offerings for subway and bus in the tap and go era. First, the fare cap program will become permanent. It's, just to note, it's been promotional up until now. Second, as you heard me describe earlier, we're bringing a second fare cap to life, this time for Express Bus customers. And the third change is very much related to the two above that, which is we are leaving this concept of a pay upfront for unlimited rides behind with the MetroCard. We want unlimited rides to be available to everyone, including our customers who cannot afford to pay upfront. The fare cap is a better tool for affordability and therefore better for our customers. We have heard from customers, though, who want to budget in advance, and so of course, these customers will still be able to preload dollars onto an Omni card. They'll take advantage of the fare cap that way. But with tap and go, if they don't use the money on the card, they're going to keep what's left. Finally, moving into the tap and go era means that every rider will have to tap to enter. Buses like subways will no longer accept cash or coins for payment onboard, but rest assured, there's 2,700 local businesses selling Omni cards for cash or for the 1% who pay with coin. So with everyone having to tap, we can fully deploy proof of payment on buses and conduct much more thorough fare enforcement. Now on to the railroads. We're proposing a 4.4% increase on one-way peak weekly and monthly tickets. I'll note that the monthly fares are still lower than they were before the pandemic, and nothing is more than $500. City ticket and far Rockaway ticket, as you know, typically follow Express Bus, and so they will also increase by 25 cents. That's $7.25 in the peak and $5.25 in the off-peak. We are also proposing that because of the widespread popularity and embrace of these tickets from our customers, that they be made permanent rather than promotional as they have been until now. Lastly, we're going to make sure that all one-way tickets within New York City are aligned to city ticket pricing, so customers are always sure to get the best deal. Now let's review the proposed changes to railroad ticketing rules. We are proposing these because we have seen a lot of change in how customers purchase and use tickets on the railroads in recent years. Primarily, that's been driven by train time success, and train time is now how the overwhelming majority of railroad customers purchase their tickets. This train time success has come with some unintended consequences that we now need to deal with where our customers are waiting until they see a conductor to activate a ticket, and that act is slowing conductors down. So the first change we're proposing will help speed up fare collection. All of these changes are designed to do that. But this first change is that all Reduced Fare customers will now be able to ride at all times, including in the morning peak, simplifying the collection process. Second, instead of asking customers to buy and activate a train time ticket before they board, customers just need to buy a ticket before you board. No more second activation step, and all one-way tickets will auto-activate and be valid for four hours. Third, we're introducing a new Day Pass product for unlimited travel, valid until 4:00 AM the next day. This will replace the round-trip ticket and offered at a 10% discount on weekdays. This is ideal for day trippers or remote workers with periodic in-office days and offers a new opportunity to try hop-on, hop-off travel on the commuter railroads. Next, customers who take 10 trips in two weeks will automatically receive an 11th trip for free, and that can be used for peak or off-peak travel so long as the zone combinations are the same. This would replace the existing 10-trip pack and is ideal for customers who feel the weekly or monthly just isn't quite right for them. And finally, to help customers remember to buy before you board and eliminate any incentive to wait and see or wait and activate, we are introducing an onboard surcharge for mobile ticket, which is exactly what we have for paper tickets today. We haven't increased that surcharge, by the way, since 2009, so we are proposing that that surcharge increase by $2 for both paper and now mobile. A series of escalating warnings within train time will help new or infrequent customers be sure to avoid that surcharge. So in closing, a very sincere thank you to those of you who are taking time to participate in this morning's hearing or sharing comments wherever that is most convenient for you. You can, of course, scan this QR code to learn more about alternative ways to reach us and comment. And with that, I'll pass it back to you, Ruby, to describe the procedures for today's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. We will now move to the public comment portion of today's hearing. Now I will describe the procedures for today's hearing. As a reminder, only those who register to speak can give public comments. I will call the names of people who have registered to speak in the order they registered. In fairness to each speaker, comments are limited to two minutes. At the one-and-a-half-minute mark, visual and auditory cues will remind you that you have 30 seconds left to conclude your remarks. Comments should relate to the purpose of this hearing, changes to New York City Transit, Long Island Railroad, and Metro North fares. All registered speakers must adhere to the rules of conduct and decorum. Zoom participants are muted upon joining. When your name is called, please turn on your camera and microphone by clicking the camera and microphone icons on the bottom of your Zoom screen. There will be a brief transition to let you access your video and microphone. During that time, please ensure your microphone and camera, if desired, are on before you begin your remarks. You have 10 seconds to turn on your camera and microphone before we move on to the next speaker. For all commenters in the room and on Zoom, when you begin your comments, please provide your name and any affiliation you wish to announce so that we have it on the record. You may also request to speak anonymously. If this is your preference, please notify an MTA staff member in the room or indicate this in the Zoom Q and A function, and you will receive further instructions. In the event your name is called and you are not present, we will read your name again at the end of the hearing in the order it was initially called. American Sign Language and CART captions are available at this hearing. To access captions at the bottom of the screen, select CC, and you will be able to turn on or enlarge the captions based on your preference. You can also view the entire transcript for context if needed. Users will not need to adjust their screen to see American Sign Language. Finally, the MTA officials present besides me will not be answering questions. They're here to listen. MTA staff are available in this room, outside the hearing, and in the Zoom questions and answer function to answer your questions about fare change proposals. The Q and A function is available only if you're logged into Zoom webinar online, and it is located on the lower portion of your Zoom window. If you're attending via Zoom, type your question into the Q and A function. MTA staff may answer your question if it pertains to the subject to this hearing. I will call the first speaker of the public hearing. As a reminder, if you're participating via Zoom, there will be a brief transition to allow you to turn on your camera and unmute your camera and microphone. Our first speaker this morning will be Assemblymember Joanne Simon, followed by Councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers.
So is this, oh yeah, okay, now it's working. Sorry. Thank you. Hi. Welcome to my district. So thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today. We're facing an affordability crisis in New York, as you know, and my constituents are facing rising housing costs, utility rate hikes, expensive groceries, and now a change in transit prices. My constituents and I are concerned with the ever-increasing cost of travel and their impacts on vulnerable populations. So although this fare increase is small, it adds up for too many New Yorkers who still struggle to pay for public transit. And we need to do as much as we can because public transit is the lifeblood of New York City and should be a lifeline of affordability. The subways, buses, and commuter rail lines need to complement each other in providing for needed affordability and ensuring that we keep these fares down for the most vulnerable New Yorkers. We need to strengthen those programs while continuing to pursue necessary upgrades. So I really want to commend the MTA for its continued pursuit of forward-thinking measures such as congestion pricing. Yay! A commitment to a more accessible transit system and a push towards a more climate-resistant transit system. But several aspects of the current fare structure seem to be counter to our shared goals of enhancing equitable access to affordable transit, which is why I support many of the recommendations outlined by the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee, which covers several topics, including the creation of a weekly city ticket, a 30-day fare cap. See, that's very quick. I want to just also point out, the proposal, I think, for Reduced Fare is terrific in terms of the accessory users. It'll be much more convenient. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the need for the Brooklyn bus redesign, the B-71, and of course, the concerns that we have with regard to the noise at, in Dumbo from the trains going over the Brooklyn Bridge and, of course, York Street. It wouldn't be me if I didn't mention York Street. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Silvina Brooks-Powers, Majority Whip of the New York City Council and Chair of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. I want to begin by recognizing the MTA's critical role in keeping New York moving. Millions of residents, excuse me, millions of riders depend on this system every day, and I know how challenging it is to balance rising costs with the need for reliable service. But we must also face the reality on the ground. New Yorkers are being stretched thin. Housing, food, utilities, every expense has gone up. Congestion pricing just added a new cost for many families. Now, another fare hike, even a dime on the base fare or an extra quarter on the Express Bus is not abstract. It's another strain on people already doing all they can to get by. This is especially true for out-of-borough riders. Express buses, which I have worked to expand in Southeast Queens, are not a luxury. They're a lifeline here in Southeast Queens. Raising fares to $7.25 risks pushing these essential services out of reach for the very communities that depend on them most. What New Yorkers are asking for is simple. Don't just ask us to pay more today with promises of improvements years from now. Riders need proof upfront. We need to see more reliable service, better frequency, improved accessibility, and stronger accountability now, not in 2013. If the MTA is going to move forward with any increase, there must be a clear and immediate service gains that riders can point to. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I look forward to continuing to work together to deliver the equitable, reliable, and affordable transit system New Yorkers deserve.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Britt Bird, followed by Jack Connors.
My name is Britt Bird, and I am presenting this testimony on behalf of Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso. Thank you, Chair Lieber, and members of the board for holding these hearings. This week, I am releasing the 2025 update to the comprehensive plan for Brooklyn. Transit is at the heart of the plan. It is central in my analysis of where Brooklynites live, work, and have access to opportunity. There is no Brooklyn without transit. Any fare increases should be regular, predictable, and incremental, and the proposed change from $2.90 to $3.00 fits these criteria. I support the addition of a weekly fare cap for Express Buses, which are vital for riders in Southern and Eastern Brooklyn. A fare cap will encourage more riders to opt for transit over personal vehicles while traveling over the BQE and through the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel, and will build on the early success of congestion pricing. As outlined in my comprehensive plan, I urge you to work with DOT to complement this fare change with bus priority lanes on the BQE and in the tunnel, which would further speed up Express Bus commutes. Changes to our railroads have a profound effect, impact on Brooklyn, not only because of our borough's three LIRR stations, but also through the millions of vehicle trips that are diverted to cleaner, safer rail journeys instead. I applaud the proposal to bring back city ticket as a permanent feature, but this current proposal does not go far enough. I urge you to include a weekly city ticket option that includes transfers to buses and subways, unify the railroad city zones to encourage regional rail travel, and introduce a mid-kid ticket discount for 12- to 17-year-olds. City ticket has already led to an uptick in ridership within the city. Incentivizing further ridership through these measures would help offset the subsidy. Finally, I encourage you to use these proposed fare changes to bring more efficient, cost-effective forms of fare collection along the Atlantic Branch. In the comprehensive plan, I call for the MTA to pursue a regional metro model of service along the Atlantic Branch with all-day frequent service and off-board fare collection. The MTA's fair, the MTA's proposal to eliminate the need to activate railroad tickets acknowledges the reality that the status quo of railroad fare collection is a hassle for riders and conductors alike. Increasing the prevalence of off-board fare collection at the city's busiest terminals would offer an alternative way to disinvent, disincentivize fare evasion without switching to tickets that are only valid for four hours. I encourage you to use the Atlantic branches for stations and dedicated tracks to pilot global best practices for regional metro service in our region. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Connors, followed by Deborah Greif.
Good morning. I'm Jack Connors, Research and Communications Associate at the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, PCAC. For the last two years, PCAC has pushed for a rider-first fare agenda, five proposals aimed at embracing the promise of Omni to make the entire MTA network more affordable, equitable, and accessible. Along the way, we've been grateful for the support of dozens of members of the state legislature, and particularly Senator Comrie, and advocates ranging from Riders Alliance to the League of Conservation Voters to the Business Council. We're thrilled to see several of these policies in the proposed fare changes, ending the practice of charging senior, disabled, and Medicare-eligible railroad riders the full fare during the AM peak, and automatically charging city riders the best fare available to them on the railroads. Still, more action is needed. First, with city commuter rail stations topping pre-COVID ridership, the time is now to double down on this success and broaden ticket options with a weekly city ticket that includes a free transfer to subways and buses. It's the equitable and business-like thing to do. Next, the proposed fare structure does little to make the railroads more affordable for families with older kids. A good start would be creating a discounted ticket option for 12- to 17-year-olds, just like the one that already exists for 5- to 11-year-olds. Finally, clarity is needed on how day passes will work for riders traveling on both railroads in a single trip. Let's seize the opportunity to encourage more people to travel around our region on the LIRR and Metro North, not force them into their cars. A unified city zone would be a good place to start. Right now, a Far Rock rider traveling to Yankee Stadium has to pay double a fare simply because they're switching railroads. At Grand Central Madison, we spent billions of dollars putting the railroads under one roof. Let's just put them under one fare structure, too. Quirks like this keep riders off-transit and money out of your pockets. Please deliver a fare structure that makes sense and saves sense. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Greif, followed by Norm Miller. Our next speaker. Deborah, can you unmute, please?
I'm trying to.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Good morning. My video seems not to be working. Thank you for your participation. Thank you for hearing my comments. My name is Deborah Greif. I'm chairperson of the Brooklyn Families Port Advisory Council. First, we want to thank you for changing a policy that has been very rough for people with disabilities, whether they're seniors or under-ing senior, that you're going to see that we can pay the reduced fare on the railroads in the peak AM hours. I also hope you can do that with express buses, because many people with disabilities need to use these express buses because they live in a subway desert. I also, in reference with accessorized, and people are complaining, but you know, it's very hard when you have to, if you're not using the Omni card, when you have to pay the two singles and then you give the driver 90 cents, that's 90 cents' worth of coins, it is very rough for the driver and for us. We can't always assume if we give them three singles, they'll have the dime to give us back. And I know everyone says, "Oh, poor..." Well, I'm poor, and it's easier for me to budget if the ride is $3. Yes, even though I am a senior and I get reduced fare for the New York City buses, and the same for the railroads and subways, not on accessorized. Unfortunately, when fare fares were started by the former borough mayor, Bill de Blasio, he forgot that seniors are poor and that we have to pay full fare. We go from paying half-reduced fare to full fare. So let's hope we can fix that. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Norm Miller, followed by Hannah Reid.
We'll come back to Norm. Our next speaker is Hannah Reid. Hi, my name is Hannah Reid, and I'm a resident of Bed-Stuy. I'm sorry my remarks aren't more formal and organized than some of my fellow citizens, but to be honest, I just learned about this hearing last night, and I felt like I had to come and say something because these fare increases will have a big impact on my community. I have to say, it's a bit laughable to have anyone on this panel talk about accessibility and affordability when talking about a price hike. The MTA is a central infrastructure for so many New Yorkers, and while a small increase may seem like nothing to you all, it makes a big difference, especially if you're someone making minimum wage in the city. Even at a reduced price, it's one-fifth of your hourly wage just to get to and from work. And what if you want to do more than go to and from work? What if you want to be able to be part of your community, to go see your friends, to go shopping? The price really adds up. I understand the need to be constantly improving fares, but there was just a fare increase last year, and with additional streams of revenue like congestion pricing, I cannot understand why it is necessary to add additional strain to New Yorkers when we are already struggling so much with the cost of living. A lot of these changes seem meant to crack down on fare evaders, but have we considered people are evading the fare because they cannot afford it? So please, as you're considering this fare hike, consider the people who are making barely enough to get by, where that additional 10 cents will have a big impact at the end of the day, at the end of the week, and at the end of their month as they're trying to pay their bills. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Camilla Sims, followed by Brian Furch.
Good morning, New Yorkers. How about we also propose, if we have a 10-cent increase, a 10% decrease of your salaries to help contribute to the costs? Because none of you are actually reliant on MTA transit. You drive blacked-out SUVs. Some of you don't live in the city at all. And to those of you who are up here respectability-politic-ing against the interests of everyday people, who you look like and identify with, who you're in community with, oh, wait, you're not, because you're not working-class people, maybe actually listen to the people who are struggling. I had to post about this on the internet last night, on TikTok, because this is poorly advertised, and it's hard to find. And if what you were doing was fair and ethical, you wouldn't have to have these meetings during working hours, where working people cannot be here advocating for themselves. Would you want people advocating against your time? No, not at all. And this morning, there were hundreds of thousands of comments, views, where people were saying, "Wow, had no idea this was even happening, but I disagree with what's happening because the Long Island Railroad system is too expensive. Coming from Jersey to Brooklyn costs $25. People are getting hit with double fares." What exactly are you doing for the people? Because it seems like you're moving within the interests of your bureaucracy, and if what you were doing was fair and ethical, you wouldn't need a police state to put a barrier in between us and you. You could actually talk to the people. You could talk to the people in the streets without fearing for your lives, and that's no threat. That's just the reality, because you, sir, are not riding the MTA. I know that for a fact. Neither are you, neither are you, neither are you. You're not relying on it.
As a reminder...
You can laugh all you want.
As a reminder, speakers may not be engaging in conduct that disrupts an orderly conduct.
Okay, I'll take 10 more seconds then. It's not disorderly conduct, and no one should have to be polite to satiate the egos of people who are not actually experiencing the challenges that we are experiencing.
Please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Y'all are hurting the people of New York. Shame on all of you.
As a reminder to all the speakers that will be speaking next, speakers shall address their remarks to the chair or meeting host and shall not make personal, impertinent, insulting, or slanderous statements about any member or the MTA board or staff, or about other members of the public. As well as, speakers may not use profanity or vulgar language, threaten violence, or otherwise engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly conduct of this meeting. If done so, you will be muted, and your time will be up. Our next speaker is Brian Furch.
Good morning. I'm Brian Furch, Associate Director for the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, PCAC. PCAC believes that small, predictable fare increases like this one are necessary to help the MTA keep up with inflation and the cost of doing business in the New York City region. We support the scheduled 4% adjustment. That said, we remain concerned about several policy and fare changes that may fuel hidden and larger increases for the system's most dedicated riders. For example, transit riders using the 30-day unlimited could see an up to 18% increase as a seven-day fare cap doesn't offer the same bang for the buck. We urge a single-day cap, and more importantly, a 30-day cap to be added to Omni. The loss of the 10-trip on the railroads could amount to a 23% increase for some riders. The proposed 11th trip in a two-week window excluding travel with a new day pass is a poor imitation. Keep the 10-trip or risk losing ridership, especially during the off-peak. Additionally, we'd love to see reduced fare for 12- to 17-year-olds on the railroads and a city ticket weekly with transfers to subways and buses, similar to the excellent $67 cap being offered for express bus riders. The resounding success of city ticket is a clear indication that riders respond in droves to simplified offerings that benefit their pocketbooks. Every dollar counts. That is doubly true for New York City's low-income residents struggling in our current affordability crisis. Urging the city to expand the fare fares program to 200% of the federal poverty level at an absolute minimum would allow an additional 400,000 New Yorkers, including minimum-wage workers, to qualify. Further expansion to include the railroads within the city would also bring relief to people with some of the city's longest commutes. Let's use fare adjustments to encourage record ridership, not discourage it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vinnie Dong, followed by Oliver Chessler.
My name's Vinnie, and I'm currently a resident at Queens, New York. I currently go to school at Queens High School for the scientists at York College. Something I'm here to address today is the underrepresentation of students across New York City within the MTA's policies. And something I would like to address first of all is, yes, we do have free fares, but that will only last us for about four or five years before we actually have to pay the increased fares. Something that's not really commonly represented with students is that $3 might not seem like a lot. However, that adds up per month, per year, and something we learned, every month, four weeks, $3, four weeks. I know there's a cap on that, but something that's not addressed, it still adds up, especially if you go to college and you're going to be in debt. That's not something students can afford soon. Another thing I would like to address is that with the constant delays and the over-reliance on the MTA systems, students are often in a pickle where they have to arrive late to school very often, like me, because the buses can't get here on time, especially when you're cutting stops with the Queens Bus Design and stating and promising us they'll be faster. However, arguably, what I have seen is that the bus design has been very slow. It's not dependable. It's not reliant. Another thing I would like to address, for students mostly, is that we have these Omni cards, these student Omni cards. These cannot last a year. Cannot last a year. This, it's paper. Mine's broke twice. It breaks, it works, you feel lucky. This does not replace our old metro cards. Yes, we get to use them more often, but it's falling apart. So I'm here to ask the board to consider views of not only adults here, but also the students, which will soon be more reliant on the MTA system. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Oliver Chessler, followed by Aleah Somru.
Good morning. My name is Oliver Chessler. I am a college student living on the Upper West Side, and I would like to address, I have a few questions about this new fare policy on the Long Island Railroad. So you say it's supposed to help people, you say it's supposed to, like, help fare collection go better, but from what I've noticed is that there's a lot of people who will get on the railroad, and yes, in the Train Time app, there'll be plenty of warnings, but there's a lot of people who will board the train and think, like, oh, even though there's going to be a lot of warnings, I'm still going to go up there, I'm still going to go and buy the ticket when I see the conductor coming through. And unfortunately, for someone like me, I've seen many times, the other day I was on the Port Washington branch, I've noticed that the conductor, they never came through to check my ticket. The other thing is that student Omni cards should be accepted on express buses. I know that there's a lot of students that live in the outer boroughs of Brooklyn, in the outer parts of Brooklyn and Queens, who rely on, and Staten Island, who rely on the express bus to get them to and from their lifeline. And the third thing is that we pay a lot of money to the MTA taxes, fare, but yet they're still, yet they're investing in things that don't seem to be working, like the protection from people surfing on the Seven train. So where exactly is our money going? That's what I would love to know. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aleah Somru, followed by Kayla Miller.
My name is Aleah Somru, and I'm the Deputy Director for New York City Policy at the New York League of Conservation Voters. Thank you to the MTA for the opportunity to testify today. Public transit is critical to reduce air pollution that causes public health impacts and greenhouse gas emissions. As we often say, we can't drive our way out of the climate crisis, which means that the MTA needs a strong operating budget to provide safe and reliable service. NYLCV supports regular, planned, and incremental MTA fare increases to help pay for long-needed improvements to system operations. This keeps the system running smoothly for millions of New Yorkers. With that said, as fares increase, coupled with the affordability crisis in many in our city face, NYLCV continues to call for an expansion of fare fares to at least 200% of the federal poverty level and increased funding for program outreach and education. We support ideas such as automatic enrollment tied to other benefits and free fares for low-income and disabled New Yorkers, seniors, and students. We also support the use of fare capping for people who regularly use public transit, including fare capping for express buses. I've submitted longer-written comments, but other recommendations we urge the MTA to consider include a weekly city ticket with free transfers to subway and buses, fare cap, and a combined railroad daily pass for riders using both the Long Island Railroad and Metro North in a single trip. Ultimately, we want to see more fare discounts and incentives for New Yorkers in need as the MTA implements reasonable fare increases. Helping more people use our public transit is good for the environment, economy, and equity. With the city's congestion pricing program successfully operating for eight months, we need to ensure our public transit system is operating efficiently and benefiting all New Yorkers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Our next speaker is Kayla Miller, followed by Eric Goldstein.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Kayla. I am a lifelong resident of Brooklyn, New York. I wanted to echo the remarks that previous speakers made about this meeting not being accessible to several people and finding out about it at the last minute. I found out about this video last night, and again, with the TikTok that the previous speaker mentioned. And I just want to echo that if several people are coming on here saying that this is something that they cannot afford, it doesn't matter if you have a history of slow, predictable fare increases. You need to adopt to the needs of the people in the room and in your city. And if people are saying they can't afford this, then you need to go back to the table and rethink some things. I recently graduated from Swarthmore College, which is near Philadelphia, and I relied on the SEPTA and the MTA to get home to and from school, so I could leave my dorm, get on the SEPTA, and then be right in front of my house, all while using the SEPTA and the MTA. And within this week, both the SEPTA and the MTA have made decisions that have made the groups within these two cities more vulnerable and unable to get to and from school and work. And like echoing what the previous speaker said, I think their name was Hannah, about what if you don't want to just go from home to work? What if you want to go other places? I think there are so many flaws with the Omni card as well. I think the city broke something that wasn't broken or decided to fix something that wasn't broken. The Omni card charges you, it doesn't even utilize the transfers. So if I want to go out and spend the day, I have to spend like $6 or $14, $12 to get around, and I'm constantly refilling my Omni card. So I'm just in complete opposition of these increased fare amounts, and I don't think that you guys are putting the needs of this city to the front, and I think you're trying to make this a hotspot for tourism, for people who can afford to throw money around at the expense of all the people who make the city what it is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Goldstein, followed by Walter Zulig.
My name is Eric Goldstein, and I'm a New York City Environment Director at the Natural Resources Defense Council, a national nonprofit legal and scientific organization active on transit issues in New York and throughout the nation since our founding in 1970. NRDC supports the MTA's proposal to increase bus and subway fares from $2.90 to $3.00, as well as the proposed 7.5% for TBTA tolls and the other proposals for discounts, senior citizens, and the like. The MTA subway, bus, and commuter rail network is the region's lifeline. Without adequate funding, a portion of which must come from the fare box, this system could grind to a halt, leaving the region's environment and its economy in tatters. NRDC believes it makes sense for the transit fare to keep pace with the rising costs of doing business. In 2003, the subway fare was $2. If fares, since 2003, the costs have gone up by 75%, according to the Consumer Price Index. If fares and a subway ride today would cost $3.50 based upon the Consumer Price Index. Thus, the MTA's proposal, although nobody likes inflation, seen in that light, appears to be both reasonable and justified. We do have one concern about the proposed fare increases, their impact on the many low-income New Yorkers who depend on public transit every day. Government at all levels must do more to ensure that the burdens of these increases don't fall disproportionately on the least affluent New Yorkers. It's essential that the fare fares program be expanded to cover everyone up to 200% of the poverty level, and enrollment be simplified and made more readily available so that those who are eligible can participate. We ask you to join us in advocating for those changes, and we thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is Susie Scott, followed by Kenyatta Simpson. Apologies. Our next speaker is Walter Zulig, and then we'll follow with Susie Scott. My apologies.
Good morning. My name is Walter Zulig, and I am speaking as Vice Chair of the Metro North Railroad Commuter Council and a longtime Westchester resident who frequently travels on Metro North. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed fare and toll changes. First, while no one likes a fare increase, we support planned, moderate raises to keep the system running. We appreciate the proposal to allow senior citizens and riders with disabilities to use the half-fare discount for travel during the morning peak hours. PCAC has long advocated for this common sense change. However, many of us take issue with some of the fare policy changes put forward, namely, the proposed proposal for both digital and paper tickets to auto-activate and expire four hours after purchase. There are many scenarios in which riders need the flexibility to purchase a ticket in advance or change their travel plans, particularly if a train is delayed past the expiration time. How will customers get a refund for tickets that expire without having been used? And will the $10 refund charge be applied? Riders need clarification about how this policy would work in practice. For paper tickets, the four-hour expiration window will require riders to make numerous transactions and reduce his flexibility while eliminating the opportunity to buy tickets in advance for future trips. A limit of seven days would be far more reasonable. Similarly, I support the concept of an unlimited day pass, but believe that it should not be limited to one railroad. There should also be a longer-term discounted round-trip ticket for people traveling over multiple days. While many of the proposals on the table are good, it is clear that more public outreach is needed. We're confident that with ample discussion among riders, workers, and the MTA, we can settle on a fair collection system that works for everyone. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susie Scott, followed by Kenyatta Simpson.
No more new debt for projects until old ones are completed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenyatta Simpson, followed by Brittany Mack.
Good morning, everyone. You're raising the fares by 10 cents, that's fine. You got to do it, you got to do it. It's unfortunate that we have to pay it. But what I'm concerned with, with raising this 10-cent fare, is it fixing the stations like Chambers Street and the study hall where everything's starting to fall down? Is it helping safety where you have people that are homeless on the street, that are mentally ill, that I've seen shooting up, literally shooting up during the day in front of families? I literally see people laying down. They're, in one second, they could go mad and hurt somebody. There's been stabbings, there's been attacks, people getting robbed, and God forbid, murdered. And is there like safety on this, for us? If we're spending all this money, we should be safe. We should be prepared to at least know that I can go on a safe ride without having to worry about is my life being at risk, oh, just for 10 cents? We're paying $3 for this? I mean, the MTA, it has to do better. It has to do better for all of us. We are low-paying New Yorkers, but at least we should have a better service. And that's all I got to say.
Our next speaker is Brittany Mack, followed by Alfredo Newball Jr.
I strongly oppose the fare increases. Although MTA fare increases are meant to keep pace with inflation, wages aren't increasing to the same extent. A fare increase on top of multiple sources of frustration, such as delays, flooding, overcharges, and delayed charges when using Omni, the inability to view trip history for Omni, technical difficulties, rats, and juxtaposition with congestion pricing revenue in addition of anti-fare evasion measures, raising skepticism about the MTA's budget use will lead to more fare evasions. Those frustrations may even drive riders away from public transportation and toward using a car instead. The solution is not adding more cops, surveillance, or higher fares. If the MTA wants more ridership and less fare evasion, service should be left, should be improved, and service should be improved and affordable, not be left to rot. Thank you for letting me speak.
Our next speaker is Alfredo Newball Jr., followed by Julian Franz.
Hello. Hello, good morning.
Good morning, we can hear you.
Okay, there it goes. My camera was a little bit fuzzy, I apologize. Good morning to all and staff on the, as the board. Listening to everyone who has been commenting about these fare hikes, I'd just like to give a little introduction of myself. I am a gentleman of service to this country. I recently retired from the United States Marine Corps, and I'm a fellow New Yorker. At this time, I like to address whether certain policies will be put in place for a lot of the veterans who actually do travels between here and to the Department of Veterans Affairs, where there can be some assistance or courtesies lenient towards those with veteran ID cards to allow travel. This has been a little bit more difficult for a lot of, not only my fellow veterans, but even to myself, who would have to still pay these fares and still find it economical pressures, as far as even meeting with the recent increase as far as in rent, and to the increase as far as the stability is defining affordability. But this is something that does need to be addressed. I spoke about this a year ago with fellow members within the MTA. I have email traffic, where I wanted to discuss about certain liaisons or coexistence to help fellow veterans and travel. And as far as for the other gentleman who spoke about the safety within the transit systems, I'm wondering what has still been happening as far as still the support from the National Guard to protect the services here in New York? The sanitation, the sanitary environment of it, it disturbs my family. I have also been part of seeing certain situations that have occurred and helped out. But there's got to be something a little bit more to this. We have the congestion pricing happening here in New York, and it was understood that that was also supposed to support in the services to the transit system as well. But I look forward to hearing what are worst-case scenarios that could happen if there is no fare increase.
Please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julian Franz, followed by Tamara Gamble. Okay, we'll come back to Julian. Our next speaker is Tamara Gamble. Tamara, if you can please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good morning. I have a lot to say, but I'm going to try to keep it brief. I just wonder, what's the end game here? Is your goal to make it so everybody bikes and we walk everywhere? Like, is the fare going to $5? I saw that a lot of people made $200,000 in overtime. That's like the cost of paying three salaries, right? Raising fare in New York City would place an unfair burden on the city's most vulnerable residents while offering little in return in terms of improved service. I've been waiting for about 25 to 30 minutes daily for the select bus, the BX12, recently. It was never that bad. For these individuals, public transportation is not a convenience, it's a lifeline. Someone like me that has a small business that has to travel a lot, this is crippling. Increasing fares would effectively tax poverty, forcing low-income workers, students, and seniors to make painful trade-offs just to get to work, school, or essential appointments. Moreover, fare hikes have not consistently translated into meaningful improvements in service. Riders continue to face delays, aging infrastructure, crowded trains, creepy homeless people trying to kill us. It's not, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. If the Metropolitan Transportation Authority expects more money from the public, there must be a clear and visible return on that investment. Instead, the quality of the service remains largely stagnant or in some cases has worsened due to under-investment in maintenance and modernization. Please take us into consideration. We cannot afford anything else.
Please conclude your remarks.
Please stop nickel-and-diming us, we cannot handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheila Jefferson, followed by Irisidis Holloway.
My name is Sheila Jefferson. I just want to encourage the MTA not to take away the unlimited ride card, because then I would have to do double car fare. And then the other thing is, I would like for the MTA to consider changing the age for reduced fare for seniors from 60 to 64 for those who are not disabled or do not qualify for the FFS program. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Irisidis Holloway, followed by Gary Prophet.
Hello, everyone. I'm basically here, I'm trying to find out what's up with the 12 bus, because you have certain lines of buses that are not, the drivers don't care about timing. I've stood at the last stop on Alabama Avenue 48 minutes at the last stop. For what? The drivers are sitting there talking, chatting, eating, doing whatever they want to do. Fix your time schedule. Fix the train schedules. Make it more sanitary. Fix your Omni machines, yo. You go to a Broadway Junction, the Omni machines don't work. You got six machines there, right? None of them work, none of them take cash. Nobody has the access all the time to credit and debit, we're not y'all. Okay? We're not y'all. I'm on social security, bro. Get with it. I know you don't care, you live in the suburbs and all that. But if you really care about the riders, the people that are paying the money, give them something that they feel like paying for, bro. Seriously. I'm on social security, I have a half-fare card, thank God for that. But fix your machines, that's my biggest thing. My biggest thing is, if you're going to stress people about paying fare, fix your machines, make it more safe. Yo, the other day, a crazy guy at Broadway Junction chased me out the station. Okay, workers seen it in everything. Y'all don't live through it, so y'all don't care, right? It's bad now, imagine when the winter comes. Too bad we can't be at y'all doorstep.
Thank you for your comments. As a reminder to all the speakers on Zoom and in the room, please keep your comments to the topic at hand. So please talk about the fare increases in New York City Transit, Metro North, and Long Island Railroad. Our next speaker is Gary Prophet, followed by Christopher Leon Johnson.
Hello?
Hi, Gary, we can hear you.
Yes, hello, this is Gary Prophet. I'm President of the Empire State Passengers Association, which promotes for better intercity rail service and lobbies for improved public transit throughout the state of New York. Increasing fares must be done periodically, but there should also be a cap on monthly fares for those commuters spending the most time on the commuter railroads and subways. We propose a cap of $420 monthly on Metro North and Long Island Railroad fares, with also the opportunity for $80 unlimited for subway bus. Therefore, nobody should be spending more than $500 a month total for their ride on MTA rails and buses. The proposed change in fare policies are very anti-passenger. Many people purchase their tickets well in advance, especially the physically challenged and passengers arriving Grand Central Terminal late in the evening after an event or transferring from JFK Airport. I personally never arrive at a Metro North station without a ticket already purchased, a paper ticket in my wallet. Now we have lines at ticket machines during rush hours or before Yankee games at busy stations like Tarrytown. Can you imagine the lines when even more passengers that don't want to purchase their ticket at the last minute are forced to purchase their ticket at the last minute? Many elderly and people not familiar with the ticket machines travel on Metro North and the Long Island Railroad. Having the stress to be forced to purchase a ticket during a busy time is not what encourages ridership, nor having to purchase a ticket at a machine during late evening hours at any station, either Grand Central or one of the other stations in the system. Also, don't eliminate the 10-trip ticket for 60 days. If you want to eliminate that down to 40 or 45 days, but your new 10-trip is valid only for two weeks, that may help the hybrid, but it does not help the people who are periodic passengers. They need to be considered also. Also, please have mercy on the passengers and machines and eliminate the proposed four-hour valid rule. The repercussions are enormous to passengers, both able-bodied and the not-so-able-bodied. And thanks for your improvement on the city ticket.
Our next speaker is Christopher Leon Johnson.
Yeah, hello. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. Just to defend General Lieber, who was the Chair of the MTA. He actually took the subway last year with his wife with no MTA security detail during one of the days where October 7th happened. So to correct that lady that pulled out General Lieber, I think he was wrong for that, you need to apologize to him, because he was actually on the subway with no security detail. And I have the proof of that, I took a picture with him with his wife. I put it on Instagram and Facebook, good chance. All right, so I'm here to defend the MTA. I think that I'm against congestion pricing. I think that congestion pricing is kind of bad. I think that it should be no increase with congestion pricing. But we need the increase of the fare for the MTA, because like I said, I think it's, I think it's fair enough. They're not, they're not increased by a dollar, they're only increased by 10 cents. I think that people need to start adjusting their spending habits instead of buying drugs and weed and alcohol all day, this is only 10 cents. So you just got to adjust your spending habits, that's what you got to do, start doing, going forward. Just adjust your spending habits. So one thing I want to tell the MTA is that they need to fix corporate NYPD to remove all the mentally ill people on the subway, and remove all the crazy people on the subway. Because once that happens, I think people will feel more safe and people will trust the MTA more when it comes to subway safety on the trains. Once you get rid of the mentally ill and all the crazy people of the subways, the people start trusting the MTA way more. But other than that, I agree with the fare increase for the MTA subway and the MTA buses, only 10 cents. People here just got to start adjusting their spending habits. Stop buying weed, stop buying drugs, stop buying prostitutes, stop buying money with that stuff. That's all I got to say. And one more thing, 20 seconds left, like I said, General Lieber actually took the subway, he actually go, he actually lived in Brooklyn, in a house in Brooklyn, and he had no security detail. So thank you, MTA. I hope this goes through. And like I said, get rid of all the crazy people on the subway. Thank you. Enjoy your day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Cohen, followed by Alvin Chu.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Good morning to the MTA Board. I live in Westchester County, and I use Metro North. I first want to address the fare hike. If this goes through, my Croton-Harman monthly train ticket will rise from $299 to $313. However, many times, the train car announcements are unclear, the Hudson Line trains have no Wi-Fi access, the train bathrooms look and smell awful, the Croton-Harman station restrooms are now locked in the evenings, and most of the time, there is no station ticket window staff. This type of service does not deserve any fare increase. Secondly, making the paper tickets valid only for four hours and/or eliminating the 10-trip ticket will negatively affect many people with limited mobility or rushing to make their train. Many people I know buy these kind of tickets so that they are not challenged by the time it takes to use the ticket machines while also finding their track and boarding their train. Buying those tickets for several weeks in advance, which people like me do, helps to reduce long lines later on and avoid missing our trains. Not buying tickets a few weeks in advance can lead to a safety hazard for people in cases of, for example, of where people are returning from the airport, let's say, after vacation, and result in having to purchase a ticket by an isolated ticket machine area where homeless and mentally unhealthy people are prevalent. No one wants to be forced to walk anywhere except to their train at late-night hours. Please reconsider these proposed ticket rules that could be dangerous, unfair to the disabled, and inconvenient to all. Also, I also feel these hearings should not have been held in August when many people are on vacation, but should have been held instead after Labor Day when more passengers could provide feedback. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Our next speaker is Alvin Chu. Our next speaker is Alvin Chu, followed by Denise Lieberston.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Alvin Chu, and I am a resident of Flatland Midwood Neighborhood in Brooklyn, New York. I'm born and raised in New York City for all my life. I have seen many of the different changes of fare type from the little token to the blue color MetroCard to the current Go MetroCard and now the black and white Omni Card and with the Tap and Go credit cards and smart devices. I am a hybrid worker. So I work in Midtown Manhattan at least a minimum of three days a week and also a father who needs to take his son, two-and-a-half-year-old son, to daycare in Lower Manhattan for all those five days in a business week. So this equates around about 69 rides in a 30-day period. And the 30-day unlimited, the break-even number is 46 rides. So I would like the MTA to reconsider having those 30-day unlimited cards or a Tap and Go cap for using the credit card and smart devices. Or if that's difficult to do, then to have the 30-day unlimited Omni Card that you can pay for, like how when you go to Chicago, Washington DC, Hong Kong, Japan, where you can purchase unlimited products on Transit branded-only card, which is easier to implement. So I would like to consider that because if you calculate this, this will be in turn equate to about $155.88 with a $36 weekly cap. And with the monthly unlimited, that's around $17.80 extra per month or $214.56 a year, given that if there is a 30-day limited of $138 unlimited card. So MTA, please consider having the 30-day unlimited card. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dennis Lieberston, followed by Karen Hamilton.
Hi. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm Dennis Lieberston, a lifetime New Yorker and transit writer. Let me address why many are frustrated with these fare increases. Let me address the perception of the system as a writer for over 60 years. We question some of the decisions of the MTA over the past decades. For example, route frequency. You imply it's increased across the board, but you seem to participate in a vicious cycle where you reduce route frequency when ridership falls below a certain level and then writers need to find another reliable way to get to their destination so ridership on those routes drop even lower and so on. There's talk about neglect, about crime, about rampant fare beating. But the decision to eliminate, over the past decade, more than half of the booth attendance is a contribution to all of those. I understand that was a necessary budget requirement, but we're still paying the price and it's unconscionable that you're transitioning to a new payment system without that service in place. I know the 10% increase is relatively small and one wonders if the last increase to $290 was to make this more palatable so you can shoehorn this in while the other more onerous increases get less airtime. The biggest issue here is the funding mechanism. There are two major problems here that go way back and constrain us to a cycle of constant fare increases. I mean, the MTA is self-funding and has to balance its own budget rather than from a larger swath of metropolitan expenses. And the other is that it's a state agency, even though the subways and buses operate entirely within the city area and many of the legislators are not invested in that system. These two issues are really hard to resolve. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Hamilton, followed by Wei Hong Chen.
Hello. I'm Karen Hamilton, a member of the New York City Transit Riders Council and a Southeast Crete resident, lifelong rider of the Bus, Subway, and Long Island Railroad. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the proposed fare changes. Fare increases are generally not popular and I also recognize fares are one of the sources of funding needed to sustain transit operations. So the following policy changes cause a considerable financial burden on riders and should be reconsidered. Discontinuation of the 30-day unlimited MetroCard could amount to a fare increase of up to 18% for monthly riders. The four-hour activation window for railroad tickets does not articulate train delay and cancellation policies. Also, the loss of the 10-trip on the railroads also results in hidden fare increase. The proposed free 11-trip limits ticket options and travel flexibility by reducing the duration of use from two months to two weeks. There are additional changes the MTA can implement which demonstrate commitment to riders. A 30-day fare cap for transit riders. Transfers to regular buses and subways with a capped weekly city ticket. And the city ticket has been wildly successful. And then more flexibility on paper railroad tickets for riders who want to travel outside of the days or times designated by the 11-trip free and the daily tickets. This would mean keeping both of those 10-trip and round-trip tickets. The relationship between transit and riders is symbiotic. The needs of both must be considered and addressed in a fairly balanced manner. And I believe the proposed recommendations will help reduce the financial impact by providing great value for the increased cost. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wei Hong Chen.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Wei Hong. I'm a student at a high school at Queens and a resident at Queens. So every day, countless New Yorkers depend on public transit to reach their jobs, attend schools, and make essential appointments. My own parents are among those who rely on public transit for their daily commute to work. And with the high cost of living arising steadily across New York City and a lot of residents living under poverty, even modest increases in fares can place a real strain on families. An increase to the fare may seem small, but for frequent riders, it could add up really quickly. It could be an extra up to $50 or more each month. That may not sound like a lot, but we need every single cent to pay for the rent, groceries, utilities, and all the essential expenses. And I also wonder where the money is going with the fare increases. Where fare increases doesn't seem necessary. With all the projects, it doesn't seem like you have meaningfully addressed issues in public transits such as the dangerous air quality for riders, aging infrastructures, dirty stations, and if it would result in more service and faster service. Simply said, we need more accountability. We need more transparency and less delays and pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Malavika Kanan, followed by June Moss.
Hi, y'all. Thank you so much for accepting public comment on this. My name is Malavika. I'm 24 years old. I work as a writer and a journalist in the city. I'm also a relatively newer resident to New York. And I think that what you might be hearing from a lot of young people like myself is that there's a cost of living crisis. That's what's energizing a lot of people to get active in politics as we've seen in the couple of months. The fact that living in New York and achieving the dreams that a lot of us have moved here for, things that we have been educated and trained for, is becoming increasingly out of reach for a lot of young people. And I understand that there is a fare cap on what the MTA charges riders per week, but $36 can cover groceries for a young person who's hustling and having to make that choice really does add up. And particularly as costs of living are rising all across the board, a lot of people are working very hard and trying to lift themselves up individually. You can only budget so far, though, when things that you cannot control in your cost of living, such as the transit that you need to ride to work, continues to increase, things that you literally cannot avoid paying. And I think that in that climate, it can help force a lot of people, particularly those from vulnerable communities, to feel like the system is set up against your ability, even if you play by the rules, even if you don't avoid the fare, to gain your financial footing. And I understand that that experience of trying to make it for yourself is one that's very distant for a lot of people who are perhaps the ones making these decisions, especially for folks who did not graduate into a recession, have not only experienced total cost of living crisis. But I think that for young people to maintain their faith in these institutions that we're paying taxes for, that we're paying for, we have to see them work with us and not be undercut against us at every chance. And I hope that by choosing against raising the fare and instead finding the money to improve this really important public transit system for other places, it's like the MTA and our government is making investment back into the people who make the city run. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be June Moss. Left the Zoom, so we're just going to continue. Our next speaker is Diane Fraser-Smith, followed by Sinead Devlin. Diane, please unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I don't know what happened to my camera. I think I pressed the wrong button. But anyway, I would just like to say with the increase, it's not that much, but we can do better. And I feel that I've seen firsthand yesterday that they are actually targeting the people who are evading paying their fares and they are taking them off the buses. But in that essence, what I would like to say is that the places that they are targeting is the people of low income. And if they don't have the money and if they do need to ride, then, you know, it would be nicer if they would just ask and see if they can get a ride, but some of them just walk on. So I understand the increase, but I think that across the board, even with Metro North, the machines do not work half of the time. And, you know, my son has to, he has a half fare, but he has to pay more, a little bit more when he gets on a train if he's not able to get his pass from the machine. So if we can just finish up the old projects, I would be greatly appreciative before the increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Halima Benjamin, followed by Sinead Devlin. Halima, can you please unmute?
You're still mute? Hi, we can hear you now. Oh, hello. Okay. My name is Halima Benjamin. I'm 22 years old. Mental health and human services agent advocate at Kingsborough. You people are money wandering. You guys. I'm sorry. I have to remind you, please do not make any slanderous comments to anyone on this board or else we're going to have to mute you. The social experiment at Utica Flatbush Eastern Parkway, where you have military guards and over-excessive police for the poor, knowing that entire area of Flatbush works at Memorial Sloan and Presbyterian as your service workers, that is inappropriate. Linking back to the last speaker, Diane, Karen, Dennis Lieberston, like, we can't keep doing this. There's diseases running rampant, air vents. Look at the subways. Look at how it is. It's disgusting. Native New Yorkers shouldn't have to pay. The old credit cards are fine. You're data collecting, data tracking, farming, breach of privacy on our phones. Not everybody has cash. Broadway Junction, that person, like the last person said, unnecessary. What's the end goal? As the last person said, biking is cool. I love biking. But fix the shit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Sinead Devlin.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Sinead Devlin. My grandfather was a retired MTA bus driver. My father's a retired NYPD officer and I'm a graduate of both Fordham University and Brooklyn College. I wish this city was something I could be a little prouder of, but after spending some time in Mexico City using the mass transportation system there, it appears that New York is struggling in comparison. You might assume that it's just because New York's system is bigger, but note that Mexico City has the second-largest public transportation system in North America behind NYC. So it's actually the best possible comparison. In Mexico City, the fare is about 25 cents. The stations and trains are spotless. There's no litter, no crime, no homeless people seeking shelter there. And a tenant treated me like I was an idiot when I asked if I had to pay a separate fee for my fare card or just load it with money. And I understood why she thought I sounded crazy, but that's how it is here. There are no advertisements, by the way. Meanwhile, the MTA wants us to pay more to ride filthy trains with trash excrement, ads plastered all over, and people afraid of being assaulted. I really advise every New Yorker to take a trip to Mexico City to have your eyes open to how bold and shameful the waste of funds in the MTA is. Earlier, the MTA representative claimed that changes to ticket activation are to make the conductors work more efficient. That is brazenly false and illogical because if that were true, then similar changes would not be made to the paper ticket expiration dates. The paper tickets have no impact on the conductor's workflow. Those are just anti-passenger changes that are being made purely to squeeze more money out of the public. The conductor's workflow is just a flimsy excuse and the MTA's attempt to suggest otherwise reflects their blatant disrespect to the public.
Our next speaker is Jessica Piscioni, followed by Gabriel Glasgow.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jessica Piscioni. I'm here to actually echo Ms. Devlin. I am a native New Yorker. I had the unique experience of living in Switzerland for five years. And upon returning to New York, I have to say, New York City is an embarrassment. The MTA is an embarrassment. I would just want to make very clear, the GDP per capita for all of Switzerland versus New York City is very similar to around $100,000 per person. Why is it that I can travel the entirety of the nation of Switzerland for $413 a month? And that's nationwide with every mode of transport, including rail, bus, ferry, trams even. This is in direct contrast to the Long Island Railroad, the monthly pass from Montauk to Penn Station being $468. I want New Yorkers to be very, very acutely aware that New York City is failing us continually, continually. The air quality, many people have mentioned the failings, the air quality, the temperatures in the stations this summer is outrageously dangerous, okay? And I just want to also make very clear, it is anti-family. I came, I moved back with my son, it is impossible to get around with strollers or anything like that, it's incredibly dangerous. I knew a mother who knocked out her front teeth because she had to use the stairs while carrying her child and the stroller. It's unacceptable that the MTA wants to increase, continue to increase these fares while giving us the, not even bare minimum standards, terrible quality. And for Ms. Lazarus to say that just because it's the lowest in the country, it does not mean it's affordable, nor is it respectable. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Gabriel Glasgow, followed by Emmanuel Raphael. All right, we'll return to Gabriel. Um, our next speaker is Emmanuel Raphael.
Morning. Um, is this thing on or no? Um, I'm part of DSA, I'm also a John Jay College student, this is my junior year now, and I had times where I had to choose either having a lunch or taking the MTA back to my house in Jew Gardens. The fares are unbelievably unfair. I have numerous occasions where I had to get in street brawls because some idiot just wanted to harass another woman. I had multiple situations where I had people passed out on the train station because the temperature is over 100 degrees, there's no AC, the air smells like a damp closet of death, and how many times I had to stay up late at night just to get to work, and I had to worry about something horrible happening to me? This is ridiculous. The fare is not fair, people should not be paying $3 to risk their lives or have crappy service. I sit in this room and I hear all these people saying the same thing as me, and you're not gonna do it. I have a feeling you're just gonna increase it to five or 10. Do you want me to walk to work? I can walk to work for like four hours straight, I have to wake up at 3:00 AM. I got here at 5:00. I woke up at 5:00 AM, and I got stopped twice on the E train. A train delayed for the next 15 minutes. It should not take that long just to get here. It should not take long for anyone to be here, and it's ridiculous that you think it's appropriate time to increase the fare while we're having a living expense. You're nothing but vultures on the people who work here.
Again, please do not make any profanities or any... Thank you for your remarks, thank you. We're returning back, our next speaker is Norm Miller. As a reminder, we asked a quorum in the room, please. All right, we're gonna return back to our Zoom folks. Our next speaker is Cassie Ruffucci.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cassie Ruffucci, I'm a member of Passengers United, and I'm in disapprove, I'm in disapprove of the purp, of the proposed for a fare hike hearing, for a fare hike. I feel disability community, individuals cannot be able to pay the fare if they are not able to get money to pay the fare, their fare. I am happy that the MTA had in mind to keep reduce fare for seniors and people with disabilities in the proposed fare, in the proposed fare hearing. Also, there should be no fare hike, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael Burke, followed by Whitney Gale.
Hello?
Hi, Michael, we can hear you.
Okay, how, okay, I don't know what's going on here, um, let me share my video. Good morning, everybody. Good morning to the board, good morning to the attendees, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Michael Burke, and I'm the former chairman of Community Board 12 in Bronx. Before I begin, I'd like to thank you again for everybody that gave me the opportunity to testify. I would like to refer back to Slide 3, where the title of the slide was called "Fair Increases Gives Better Service." I, that may or may not be true, when yes, there are things that you want to do aspirationally, but at the same time, when you ride the New York City subway system, you see subway stations somewhere which are in massive decay, so I questioned the title of that slide, but that's not what I'm here to talk, talk to about. That's not in dispute, for the most part. Most New Yorkers would, for the most part, agree that you're trying to give better service. The problem is when customers don't pay their fare share. What does this lead to? This leads to congestion pricing. This leads to increasing costs to pass through or travel the MTA-operated bridges and tunnels. This increases the subway or the Metro North or Long Island Railroad costs. So the question then becomes, why are these costs increasing for people who do pay into the system? And the reason is because you have several people who do not pay into the system. So as been stated before, we really need to worry about collecting fares from the people who evade the fare service. Case in point, I live in the Bronx. On a 28 and 38 bus, approximately 90% of the people do not pay the fare. If you collect the fares from people who don't pay, you would not need a fare increase. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Whitney Gale, followed by Alia Elfar. Okay, we'll return to Whitney. Our next speaker is Alia Elfar.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm, I...
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, um, so my name is Alia, I'm speaking as a, um, as a person who is in renewable energy, as a person who moved to the city years ago after college and has seen a few different changes with the MTA, and who just like studies like, you know, transit in general from my degree, sustainable development. So, um, I really think that funds are being misdirected. I don't think that the fare increase is necessary, and here's why. Andrew Cuomo alone took $241 million in the MTA, that money could have obviously been used to improve the subway. And that's just not the only example of mismanagement. They also, in 2023, the NYPD spent $155 million on subway overtime, and fare evasion didn't really get much better in the years following. So even though the MTA obviously can't control what the NYPD does, they do request police presence when like there's homeless people or whatever, like, you know. Instead of putting those police resources towards like harassing people at the sub, at the, at the turnstile, when we know that that's not actually really helping very much, it would make more sense to take that money and put it directly into improvements to, for example, the signal issues that have been rampant at 59th Street, especially when you guys have already raked in nearly half a billion dollars from congestion pricing. Like, obviously that money can be used to make the subway better. Also, not being able to see the purchase history on Omni is shady. Somebody told the city that they were charged 18 times between Monday and Tuesday despite taking just a pair of round trips. Changing the ticket structure for the railroad also doesn't make sense. An 18% increase for 30-day unlimited and a 23% increase for railroad riders is just unacceptable. These fare increases don't exist in a vacuum. Additionally, with the train tickets being unstaffed, the, I highly oppose the instant activation and the expiration for the four-day tickets.
Please conclude your remarks.
One train's pushed 95 degrees, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Herschberg, followed by Jason Anthony. Steve, can you please unmute? Steve? Okay, we'll come back to Steve. Our next speaker is Jason Anthony. We will come back to Jason. Our next speaker is Christopher Greif.
Good morning. Okay. Good morning, I'm Christopher D. Greif, ADA Accessibility Transportation President. As I'm looking at the proposals, and one thing I'm gonna say is, as an accessibility customer and a person with a disability, it is gonna be easier for seniors who use its access to ride, because instead of getting 90 cents to find, now three singles, and that will make it easy. On the other proposal I like, it finally is now, if I wanna leave somewhere early in the morning from upstate or go Nassau County or Suffolk County, now I can go through the railroad during rush hour, just paying the reduced fare price. It would be easy for me and my fellow other advocates who like to travel in the morning on the trains. I may be a low-income person, also with a disability, but I do have to make sure I budget. It is sometimes not easy, but we have to budget what we have to do on this. I do hope that in the future, and I will say "future," as I use that word a lot, that we can work on a train ticket combined with the Long Island Railroad and Metro North, because if I go from Fort, from Queens Village to Forum Road in the Bronx, it should be a little easier to pay at least a $5 or something easy for a customer who may just wanna get from one end to the other. Because a lot of us can get somewhere a little faster and not using their car, or sometimes the buses do get stuck when cars are blocking bus stops. But the fare is important, that we need to make sure that fare invading is stopped once and for all. And I want to make clear that because fare invading, it does hurt us for seniors and people with disabilities who are paying the goning for the gates. We still thank the law enforcement, but fare is important. Thank you.
Thank you. We have reached the final speaker for this hearing. We are now gonna recall the names of any registered speaker who may not have had the opportunity to speak in the first round. So we will be calling right now Norm Miller. Norm, if you could unmute yourself. You can speak now. Norm, um, you're a muter, you can make your remarks.
Oh yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, okay. Hello and good day. I come before you today to say that the fare hikes should not transpire in 2026. We are already paying for service that is inadequate with no improvements in sight, as last month we experienced one of the worst subway disruptions of the summer, not once, but twice, when the subway signals at the Westport Street, Washington Square, and Manhattan malfunctioned. What I would like this board to do is focus more on increasing service and amnesties rather than increasing fares every two years or so. Thank you for paying attention to these matters, and please do not fake, do not raise the fare, do not increase the fares, and focus more on improving service overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next and final speaker will be Jason Anthony.
Good morning, everybody. Jason Anthony, the Transit Girl. We want to remind everybody that's here in the room that not only New York City is facing a fiscal cliff. For example, the city of Philadelphia, its system, SEFTA, is facing, get this, folks, a service cut of 45%, and fare increase of 20%. Across the Hudson, New Jersey Transit Corporation raised their fares since last year of 18%. And next year, another three. The Port Authority, since 2017, they have used their practice of annual automatic increases due to inflation. I have noticed some people since last night, they have learned about this public hearing through TikTok. I'll say this, I'm native New Yorker, millennial, I use the system every single day from this neighborhood that we are right now. I have seen posters all over the place, in buses, subways, digital screens, all over the place. It is time that the people educate themselves and look outside of New York City, because the federal government won't leave the agency with no money. And what the people's gonna do about it? Because I'm already sick of the people jumping turnstiles and not paying the fare share like I do.
Apologies, we have one last person on Zoom. Our next and final speaker will be Eric McClure. Eric, you can begin.
Thank you, good morning. My name is Eric McClure, I'm the executive director of Streets PAC. While it's understandable that the MTA needs to occasionally raise fares to offset increases in underlying operating costs, it's crucial to do so in a way that encourages more ridership and does not create undue burdens, especially for those with low income, seniors, families, and the disabled. We strongly urge the addition of a city ticket with fare capping and a single-ride city ticket that includes free transfers to subways and buses. Both of these are critical ways to offer affordable commutes to working-class New Yorkers who live in communities that are underserved by the transit system. City ticket should also extend to rides that combine the Long Island Railroad and Metro North. We also urge the restoration of a 30-day or monthly unlimited ride option. Under the proposed fare structure, the new cost for someone currently opting for a 30-day unlimited card will increase by more than 13%. Given what's happened to ridership since early 2020, fare should be structured to incentivize more use of the system, which monthly unlimited option would encourage. We support the proposal to eliminate full fare for seniors and the disabled from the AM peak on the Long Island Railroad and Metro North. The existing system of charging full fare to people who otherwise receive a significant discount is short-sighted and confusing. We urge the board to adopt this recommendation. We also urge the board to include a reduced fare option for 12- to 17-year-olds on the commuter railroads. Charging youths full fares discourages families from choosing the train when visiting the city, and the MTA should be doing all that it can to discourage driving in favor of mass transit. Furthermore, the proposal to eliminate ticket activation, while perhaps understandable from a fare evasion standpoint, is very hostile to riders who pay their fares. Speaking personally, the 10-trip off-peak ticket is my go-to fare for traveling by commuter rail, which I do several times a month, but in an inconsistent pattern. We strongly urge the board to reject the current proposal and rethink ways to reduce fare evasion without penalizing riders who use the system frequently, but not for an everyday commute. Finally, while this is outside the MTA's purview, we strongly urge expansion of the fare fares program to 200% of the federal poverty level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This concludes the public hearing. Thank you for joining us today. As a reminder, if you're unable to attend these public hearings, there are several ways to provide comments on the proposed changes to fares. Visit mta.info/2025-fair-hearings for more information on how to submit a comment. Additionally, you can mail a letter to MTA Government and Community Relations at 2 Broadway, 16th Floor, New York, New York, 10004, or you can call the hotline 646-252-6777. Telephone agents are available daily from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Finally, we have the public comment at select subway stations, mobile van locations, and at the LIRR and Metro North stations within the service area from Monday, August 25th until Friday, September 12th. Please visit mta.info/2025-fair-hearings for the complete calendar of our locations. The time is 11:48. This concludes the public hearing. Thank you for your participation. This concludes the public hearing, thank you for your participation.